We will call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Knutson.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Brooke.
Sarah?
We're unmuting. She's -- we were muted for a second, so she couldn't hear us. So Kim's unmuting us. There we go.
Brooke.
Hall.
Here.
All right. First thing up is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for people to weigh in on issues that are important to them, that they think the city should be talking about. If they are issues that are not currently on this agenda, please keep your comments brief. Please try not to repeat your -- what people had said in the past or prior to you getting up to speak. And identify yourself and your address. I think that's it. Are there any comments? Anyone have any comments? Anyone have any comments? Anyone have any comments? Very numb, close that portion of the agenda, consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from August 15th, 2022, regular council meeting. Approve claims in the amount of $359,445.38. Approve the quote from wanting concrete in the amount of $27,478 to install a decorative walkway and patio at the Prospect Park overlook. Approve the proposal submitted by Hudson Dog Owners Association to install three additional shade structures and a storage shed at the Hudson Dog Park. Approve the Croy Cross cycle race in Grandview Park. Approve a pre-annexation agreement between the City of Hudson and William Host III, the owner, and Lincoln Capital Acquisitions LLC, the purchaser, for the annexation proposal. Approve the 2022 alley repaving project bids and reallocate funds to cover funding shortfall. Approve the letter engagement with S.E.H. to perform a capital cost study for proposed annexation at 472 Stageline Road. Approve Resolution 17-22 for the adoption of the 2022 City of Hudson Master Bicycle Pedestrian Plan. And approve the introduction of Resolution 18-22 and set a public hearing date to partially discontinue a portion of a public right-of-way for 11th Street generally located between 1217 11th Street and 1208 11th Street, Stephen and Terry Wilcox.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve consent agenda. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Brooke.
I saw her lift move.
Yes.
Is, uh... Sarah, are you unmuted?
She's unmuted. It's just not coming through this.
Okay, we're not hearing you. We're able to read your lips so far. All right. Motion's approved, consent agenda is approved. Discussion and possible action on diversity committee.
All right. So I ask that we continue the discussion. And I think that we absolutely need the diversity committee. I looked at the Polco Community Equity and Inclusion Survey that had been done, and it's very apparent. One of the questions was, how much do you think that the city should be... How much of a priority, if at all, should it be for your local government to focus on the following? Question: Creating a diverse, inclusive, and fair community. 64% of the respondents said high priority. Addressing social, economic, and racial equity differences in jobs and housing, 64% said high priority. Hiring more diverse staff, 53% said high priority. Recruiting diverse people into positions of local government leadership, 54% said high priority. There were some, quite a few other comments in there or questions that I think are relevant. I don't want to go through them all. I would encourage each of you to look at this individually. But things that stuck out were that people who... people are concerned about how others are treated in this, in this community. And I think that the diversity committee is the way to start addressing the issue.
Joyce, do you have a sample size on that?
Yeah, the sample size is 106, I think it was, or 111? 111, I think. So it's a small sample size, but if you look at the makeup of the sample, it has a wide variety of people, very evenly distributed among age groups, and so I think that it's a good sample of our community.
I missed Randy. Did you have a question about the survey?
I asked what the sample size was.
I think it was 112 respondents.
111.
111, okay.
I don't know. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, we can now.
Now we can.
Okay, great. I'm just going to chime in if I can, and if I fade away, just let me know. But at last council meetings, Mayor O'Connor asked us to do some thinking about this and to share some thoughts and potentially emotion on this. And I wanted to just reflect on the areas that we did agree upon, and areas that we agreed upon were that none of us here are experts, and that it's important to continue this discussion, and that if it does move forward, which is personally my hope, that we want it to be done thoughtfully and with a positive impact on our community. It was indicated that there are several of us on this council that do have family members with diverse backgrounds, which does offer some context for some of us. Racism is an ongoing issue. That was a topic mentioned. And DEI is larger-than-race, LGBTQ+, it includes age, gender, socioeconomic status, religion, and varying abilities. So my thoughts, which we were charged to do, was to go to the comprehensive plan, which is the blueprint that was approved through our plan commission and ultimately through our council. And under planning principles, principle number two, our citizens have told us that they want an equitable and inclusive community. So what do I think on this? And I think our library has done a fantastic job with Voices of the Valley, which focuses in on diverse voices. And those diverse voices in our community have said we could do a better job. You know, we do great in some areas, and we can be stronger in other areas. And so those are comments from people who do have that diverse background. I know it was said that perhaps we were looking for a problem where one isn't, but perhaps the problem's there, and we're practicing avoidance. And I'm the first to admit that this is a very big issue, and that we want to do it justice, and we want to do it right. I would encourage us to look at community leaders that we have, such as the YMCA, and I'd even encourage us... I feel we have a responsibility to the folks that have put us in this office to really make sure that all of us here have an understanding. And I would encourage us to do an online training, and I have done some research and have found two options that I'll share with Erin. They range from 30 to 60 minutes, just with some basic understanding, so that we can make an informed decision. It's what our community deserves.
I would also like to see a facilitator to, someone who is trained in this type of work, to help facilitate the work of the committee. We don't know what we don't know, and hopefully the facilitator will understand the problem much better than we do, and how to approach it.
Well, I think after a lot of reflection after our last meeting and through the process that the committee has gone through, and somebody who voted for this, I did, and in favor of it, but we're not doing it any justice. We're not giving the members of it any credible direction to move and what we need to do to accomplish the ultimate goal of being all-inclusive. Isn't that kind of what the primary goal is, so people feel welcome? So we're setting up that committee for failure as a body. So it's... my thought is, we need to suspend this diversity committee, so they're not looking for something just to pull out of the air to do, and then revisit it, rebuild it when we have our stuff together, when we have more information, and when we have the right demographics to sit on that committee. I want a cross-demographic sample size to sit on that, not just a bunch of old Hudson, Wisconsin, white people, or whatever you want to call it.
I agree with you on that, Randy, no question about it. I think that the facilit... getting a facilitator in here should be our first step.
Should be, but let's not drag these people any further on. Let's abolish the committee and start over.
I don't think we need to start over, but I think we can suspend the committee until we get the facilitator identified, but I don't...
I mean, the Voices of the Valley, Sarah mentioned the YMCA, there are a lot of different avenues that we could take. And if we can't do it right, then we shouldn't do it at all.
If I could interject, you know, building on what both council member Morissette and Hall have shared, I actually would like to bring a motion forward, which is what Mr. Mayor had encouraged us to do, that I think is reflective of both Joyce and Randy's comments. And so I move that the council members participate in an online training regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, involve community leaders such as the YMCA, to help us draft an action plan, and to return to this topic before the end of the year with a finalized commitment, so that our community members know where we stand on this situation.
I'll second that.
I'm not interested in taking an online course. I would rather have someone come in and explain what we're doing right or wrong.
May I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate everyone's ideas and thoughtfulness about this. I did speak a little bit at our last meeting about my concerns. I was not on the council when the committee was set up. I do have kind of a fundamental concern about what sort of committee it was. Maybe it should have been an ad hoc or an advisory committee, and that still would be an option. I expressed my concerns, and I'll repeat it. From last time, that when we appoint people to a governmental body, which this committee is, then they are subject to open records requests, which might be quite a bit of a burden for some people. And again, that would be their personal devices that would be inspected if someone did make an open records request, and it can be very broad. If you've never been subjected to one of those, they can pick out a few words and ask for every email that has those words in it. So I do want to protect the people that want to come forward and serve from that possibility, and so I do wonder if we could make a committee, and I know I'm talking around the motion, but this is discussion time, that we could do something different rather than that. I do also... my core feeling is that this is not a function of city government, and that it's not a core function of government for a small town like Hudson. And so I feel that we have a lot of wonderful nonprofits, churches, our library, a lot of organizations in the community that can foster and encourage different groups that are here in Hudson. And it takes time to find your way. It's a small town. It seems like a big town, but it's not. And it takes time to fit in and find your way, and I think helping to promote and advocate those organizations that we have that are in place already, that, again, it's not really the form of government. I don't believe it's our job as city government to undertake what is basically social change. I think social change should happen in society, but I don't think that's our role. So that's my comments for now. Thank you.
Could you read back the motion?
I need to get it from Sarah. I don't have it all.
Sarah, could you reread it?
Yes, I sure can. And I just want to, before I do that, say thank you, Councilmember Knutson. I do think it's important to note that our comprehensive plan does give different direction than that. But the motion that I made is I move that council members participate in an online training regarding DEI, involve community leaders such as the YMCA to help draft an action plan, and to return to this topic before the end of the year with a finalized commitment for our community members. I certainly would entertain... I know Councilmember Morissette mentioned an in-person training, and I certainly would consider that as a friendly amendment.
I guess I have a question about your motion. You mentioned by the end of the year, revisit this and then provide a... are you saying rework the diversity committee and then re-present it by the end of the year?
That's my intent, is to reach out to community experts such as the YMCA and have them help us figure out the best way to move forward. Let's work with the experts in this area to make sure we do this right.
Okay. Because I guess it just, it hits me that we're... I personally, you know, I've done homework. I've talked to a handful of people. I actually have lost a candidate through this process of, you know, the couple of months that this has been kind of kicked down the road, and actually watched some of the past video of the meetings, and they withdrew their, you know, their offer to be in. So I guess, Sarah, the reason I'm asking that is it's almost... I think we're still discussing, is this right? Is this committee right? Should it be placed with the City of Hudson? Is that right? So I just want to make sure you're... obviously, that's where you're leaning, but if we're voting on this, it sounds like we're giving ourselves four more months to cobble together another diversity committee really quick. So I kind of struggle with that.
I think... Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Sarah. It's harder for us... it's harder for you online to talk, so go ahead.
Thanks for understanding that, and thanks for your patience. You know, I think that the future would depend a lot upon what the outside experts would recommend for us. I think, you know, that would become more clear. But I think our first starting point is getting us all better educated, so that we can really make informed decisions. I hear some concern about not really sure what direction we should go, and I think just having some of that initial training from a council perspective would help us make a better informed decision, so that it is set up for success, whatever direction we end up going.
So there are a couple of things here. I'm a little confused. You may have seen, I've been talking to both sides over here with our administrator and our attorney. I'm not, I'm not sure, Sarah, that your motion right now is germane to the topic, and I'm trying to figure that out. First of all, the diversity committee was set up as a diversity committee, not a DEI committee, just diversity committee. So I don't know where DEI training comes in here. I don't know that fits into what it is that we're discussing right now, and certainly that's something that we could discuss at some point in time. But I just don't know that that fits in to the topic that we're currently discussing, which is our diversity committee. So... but if we want to talk about this, that's fine, you know. I don't know that I care to see a facilitator come in, and as you said, to point out the problems that we have with the city. Again, this looks to me like a solution in search of a problem. I'm not getting emails, texts, phone calls about issues that we have with inclusion here in our city. I mean, clearly, we know that we don't have a very diverse city, but we also know that it's becoming more and more diverse, and has become so over the past. In talking to one of the candidates that I would be recommending to this committee, he told me that he... by the way, he's four years living here from Mexico, said that he has found that our community has become much more diverse in the last four years than it was when he first moved here. So we know that it's not real diverse, but we know that it is becoming diverse. I don't know that we have a problem at this point. Clearly, you're pointing out what was done with the comprehensive plan, and listening to what you had to say about the comprehensive plan, the questions that were asked, that's something that we need to, you know, focus on as a city. I didn't see anywhere in the questions, should we have a diversity committee? Should we do DEI? Should we have facilitator training? Should we put all of our council members through training? I personally have been through diversity and inclusion training three times, and I imagine that a number of the council members here have also been through it. So I understand that we need to focus on, to make sure that we focus on this community being a welcoming community, absolutely. We need to focus on making sure that when people apply for jobs here, that every applicant is weighed evenly. And... but, you know, beyond that, again, I'm... we've seen, as much talk as we have had on this committee, about this committee, at our council meetings, we still have council members that don't have candidates that haven't expressed an interest in being on the committee. And until we get that kind of interest, I mean, I don't understand what it is we're trying to do.
Well, that's where a facilitator would come in, would be to help us to better define this.
Define the problem? Find a problem?
Well, we've got a problem. It's been...
Just explain those to me again. Let's go through the questions once again, Joyce.
I would like each of you to look at it. There are a lot of questions in here.
Sure.
I'm not going to read the whole thing.
But it said that the city should be focusing on making sure that we are inclusive and welcoming, that we make sure that we're, you know, try to bring in a diverse work staff. You know, those are the things you brought up.
Right. Other things that...
We can do that without a facilitator, don't you think?
Well, I think that we've got a lot of... so it says, please rate your community on each of the following. And valuing residents from diverse backgrounds. 49% said poor. 20% said fair. So that indicates a problem. Treating all residents fairly. 29% said poor. 29% said fair.
Joyce, could I excuse you a moment? Do you think that that question is implying that the City of Hudson is not treating people fairly? The city, as in the government, the people, the snowplow drivers skipped your street, you know? Do you think that, or do you think it's just a feel, a vibe of the community that they feel isn't welcoming or valuing them?
And that's hard to define, but yes, I think that it is part of, part of it is the community, yes, rather than the city itself.
Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
but there is... there are issues with people not feeling welcome. So another question is, questions are, how welcoming, if at all, do you think your community is for... so this is the community rather than the city government. But, for example, people who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, or other non-straight sexual identities, 31% said not welcoming, and 28% said slightly welcoming. So, you know, so let's look at the vision and goals for the committee. Creating city initiatives and policies to promote a welcoming and inclusive climate for all residents, businesses, and visitors. Providing advice on training and support for city staff on cultural awareness and best practices for cultural engagement. Three, initiatives to increase and celebrate cultural awareness and abilities in our city. Four, researching grants or other resources to help fund initiatives. Five, reviewing community concerns regarding diversity and inclusion. Six, providing advice and feedback on the comprehensive plan or other city policies. Seven, other goals or tasks assigned to them by the city council. Eight, other goals or tasks developed by the diversity committee and approved by the city council.
So, and when that committee met, Joyce, they met twice, I think.
No, they met...
Three times?
Five times.
What, did they? Oh, I'm sorry.
The full committee only met twice. After that, we never had a full committee meet, unfortunately, of all members.
Oh, but we had a quorum, otherwise we...
They did have the quorum for the other three meetings, correct? But it was not the full committee.
I think I'll go back to the sample size. You know, one of the, one of the meetings that I had with the then-leaders, I guess this was probably March, you know, a couple of things about that discussion was, number one, not being set up with direction, and what was their direction, and that was kind of a question mark back to me as a councilperson. I think having a clear line of sight of direction. The other thing that we talked about is sample size within the... I mean, it's 111. Would it be worth to step back to your point, not, you know, are we creating a problem? Maybe we need a larger sample to see if there is a problem that we need to address. And so I think that was, that was one of the things that we talked about.
One of the other things is that the 111 sample size, 93, thereabouts of the respondents identified as white. So, I mean, how diverse is that? And again, you've got people that want to be proxies for more diverse communities. And if they, if these communities thought that they were being marginalized, I think that we'd be hearing from them right now. We've been debating this here for how long? And we have said that we need to reach out, we need more call, more time for people to respond, and here we sit. We still don't have them.
Have we heard from anybody else applying for the committee? The last couple of weeks?
No, I've got nothing new.
What is our population in Hudson now?
14,5.
14,5.
20, with the 22 updated numbers from the state, we're actually a little over 15,000 now. I believe it's 15,043.
I believe so.
Yep. Yes, which does add a liquor license.
So 111 and then 93 of them are white. Again, we're not identifying... we're identifying a solution for a problem that might not be there. Are there incidences of certain racism or whatnot? Yes, and I've seen it firsthand. But the overall community is welcoming, and there's a lot of people in the city have worked very hard to grow it into what it has become today, that people want to move here. But I just, I think we're still looking, and I don't like the cliche necessarily, but we're looking for a solution for a problem that we can't, we can't identify. I mean, we identified it, but is it there? How big is it?
Okay, I think that, I think that, I mean, nobody's closing the door to this. I mean, if you, we've got a committee that isn't functioning right now, and we can certainly revisit this at any time at all. I just, until we get more interest coming from the community itself, from the different diverse segments of our community that we're trying to address here, I just don't see what we're... I don't understand what we're trying to do.
If I could just add in a comment here, I do want it to be noted that marginalized people often don't feel confident that their voices would be listened to, or that there'd be a lack of knowledge and understanding. And so I think it would go a long ways to marginalized folks if we took the time to get a better understanding. And I'll be disappointed if we don't head in that direction, especially as council members in our community were considered leaders. And if these are concerns, and maybe you guys, maybe some of us here haven't heard, but I know I have heard, that they don't feel comfortable. And so those are the voices that I'm bringing forward. Those are the concerns I'm sharing. I encourage all of us to watch the Voices in the Valley from the past with the library. I know there's going to be more starting this fall. I know there's going to be more starting this fall. Uh, they are heartfelt scenarios that our community members have experienced. And I think we represent all people, and I think this is the route for us to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Sarah, I'd just like to say I really appreciate how compassionate you are and very caring and open to people coming forward to talk to you. And it does pain me to think of people not feeling welcome or belonging here. Um, because I, I do value everyone that's in Hudson, whether they live here or a visitor. Uh, I do think, in my perspective, that we focus on what we have in common to move forward. That is the perspective that I look at life, I guess, is how do we find the things that we all enjoy or have in common and make Hudson a better place for everyone to live? And hopefully that those people begin to feel more welcomed because I certainly, uh, support your, your thinking and your caring compassionate attitude. I appreciate it.
All right. So, I know, I'm just trying to, did you want to repeat the motion, Sarah? Or does everybody have a good understanding of what it is?
I would like to hear it one more time.
Okay, can we hear it one more time, Sarah?
Um, certainly. I move that council members participate in an online training regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, involve community leaders such as the YMCA to help us draft an action plan and return to this topic before the end of the year with a finalized commitment for our community.
All right, everybody got it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, motion is not approved.
I'd like to move to suspend the diversity committee at this time. If, and I think there are other community-based organizations, and the one that comes first to hand is the interfaith community, possibly as a, as a tool to use. Um, and to move it there, we just don't have our stuff together.
So the motion?
Move to suspend the diversity committee as it is right now. A second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second discussion.
I would just like to say that I would like to see a proposal, um, something that is a little bit more, I mean, if we are going to go down that route, to, to see something that's a little bit more tangible.
Like, an example from something, or what?
An example from maybe a different city or somebody that's doing this similar thing. Um, but just more substantive, um, direction. I'd be open to that, I guess that's what I'm saying.
All right, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right, motion is approved. Discussion on Hudson Area Joint Library. We have with us here today our library director, Shelley Tukas. Welcome, Shelley.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Um, I have a PowerPoint, so I believe she's going to get that going for us.
Before you start, um.
Yes.
I'd like to say thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And since I asked for this to be put on the agenda, um, so anyway, Shelley and I had quite a discussion about things and, um, about what's happening. And I asked her a lot of questions and, um, and so I asked her to, to do a presentation on what's going on so that, because I know that if I've got questions, other people have questions, and the general public has questions. So anyway, um, I hope she incorporated all the questions that I gave her.
I hope so, too. Um, there's been a lot of misinformation out there. If you follow Facebook, there's a lot of concern, and so I'm glad we're able to do this. Um, let's get going. There we go. I'm going to do a very quick background. Um, everybody here knows the history, so I just want to get through that really quickly for people who, um, aren't up to speed. We are still a joint library, um, one of twenty-eight out of three hundred and eighty libraries in Wisconsin. And we serve just over thirty thousand people, and that makes us the thirty-second largest library in the state. So about twenty years ago, we began when community leaders came together over a conversation that four, working together, could build a much better library, and we would be able to keep county tax dollars local. The joint agreement that everybody signed states the purpose for the agreement, and that was to substantially increase library funding. We hit a perfect storm of sorts in two thousand and twelve. There were errors that caused the library to not receive four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in required funding. Strict levy limits came into play. There were changes to library funding laws for joint libraries. And all of this sort of led to unintended consequences that kept library funding flat and the ability to keep it flat really indefinitely. Take a look here. So in two thousand and twelve, the revenue we received from the four partners was about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that legally required revenue was just over a million. So we fell, um, quite short. And as the conversations moved forward over the last couple of years, the question has been, how do we recover that four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars? How do we get back to two thousand and twelve? At that time, it would have required a sixty-six percent increase. So talking, you know, big dollars. And as of now, our partner revenue is seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, and that's up nineteen percent from that two thousand and twelve number. The reason we got really excited about the county funding mechanism that you have all looked at and heard about over the year is because it got us there and actually got us over that amount. We would have been at about one point one nine million if that plan had gone through. So things started happening very quickly. Um, the county funding mechanism ran into some roadblocks and some questions that we were trying to resolve. And a couple of weeks ago, um, beginning on August first, the town of Hudson voted to withdraw from the joint library, followed the next night by the village of North Hudson. And last week, on August eleventh, the town of St. Joe voted to withdraw. They all mentioned concerns about liability, um, having to indemnify the county and the position that could leave their communities in. They also don't like that that particular plan had a requirement for an annual review and approval. Those are the things that they have mentioned. And we were in the process of trying to get some information that might have resolved some of those concerns, but the communities decided that they hadn't, their best intentions were to withdraw and move forward as a municipal library. Also, of course, they're saying that they will transfer the levy capacity to the city. And if that worked, it would provide substantially more funding for the library. But I can't tell you that it does work. I don't know. And that is what I've conveyed to the communities is there's still a lot of unanswered questions. And until the state regulatory agency weighs in on how that happens, I just cannot tell people what the impact is going to be. So let's talk about where we are now. This year, our board had agreed we were going to need to close on Mondays. About middle of December, the Hudson Area Library Foundation said, we have enough in donations that we can keep the library open on Mondays. And so we are very grateful for their work, for all the people who have donated to the foundation. We were able to stay open on Mondays this year. Um, basically, they gave us a large grant for us to buy our collection with, which gave the board the flexibility to change the budget and allow us to remain open. So right now, we've had on the table closing Mondays and Fridays in two thousand and twenty-three. We've again had a conversation with our two support organizations, the foundation, as well as the Friends of the Library. And they have said they are going to try to raise a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which would allow us to stay open on Mondays and Fridays next year, if they're able to do that, along with use of some unrestricted funds. The concern, of course, is then we go into two thousand and twenty-four with a two hundred thousand dollar hole. So that just gets bigger and bigger every time we get into using donations. Um, this is looking at our revenue source for two thousand and twenty-three, the potential revenue source. And you can see we're hitting the twenty percent mark of where the funds are coming from, donations and unrestricted funds, and it's just not sustainable.
What does UF stand for?
Unrestricted funds. Um, so to give you an idea of what we've done with the collection, that is sort of how we've managed to stay open. Um, we have reduced collection spending significantly. In two thousand and ten, we were spending almost a hundred and ten thousand dollars on our collection, and that was not grants, that was directly from our budget. Um, in two thousand and twenty-one, we dropped that to sixty-one thousand. And this year, the library's contribution to that collection fund is about fifteen thousand, um, and the rest has been made up by those grants. And we literally considered dropping to two thousand five hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty-three. That is the legal minimum you have to spend on a collection to be a library in the state. So, um, council member Hall asked me, if the library dissolves, what funding models or metrics do libraries look at to sort of establish, well, where is it that you should be? And there are several ways you can approach that, and I just put a few of them together here. Um, one is looking at the per capita average of libraries in our county. And just so you know, I've got two thousand and nineteen numbers in through most of this presentation and data. And that's because it's our last normal year before the pandemic, and the pandemic affects circulation, and we were closed, and so the numbers are, they get kind of wonky. So in two thousand and nineteen, um, per capita funding, the average for St. Craig County was a little over fifty-three dollars, and our library is at twenty-three seventy. So if we were funded at that average, our budget would be one point six million compared to the eight hundred thousand that we currently have in county, or in nineteen, that we had in county, um, and municipal funding. The other thing you could look at is being proportionate to other communities in our area. And this is kind of a complicated chart, but stick with me. Um, I'll just give you the example here of New Richmond. What they are required to spend on their library to be exempt from the library tax, the county library tax, was two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. What they actually spent was four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So they're paying two hundred percent of their minimum funding. Now, if you go down, you'll look at our communities in the partnership. Now, they have a different funding law, so this is comparing them to the other communities and the funding law that they follow. You can see, let's just take some, uh, the town of Hudson. Um, the funding required for exemption, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. They paid two hundred and two thousand, so they're paying about sixty-one percent of that minimum. So you can see there's some pretty staggering differences. And I think it speaks to, first of all, state aid. We know that that's been an issue in our community here in Hudson. Um, but also to communities who started higher and then sustained the funding over time, that amount is just going, the gap is going to grow and grow. So the next chart looks at, um, what our funding level would be proportionate, if we followed these proportionalities. Um, please note it is demonstrative of ratios and not reality, okay? Because hang on to your seats. So if we were doing what those other communities did proportionately, you can see at the highest level, we'd be at two point seven million. So again, ratios, that's, that's what that is there for. So another thing to look at is the state does have library standards. And they are voluntary standards, but they're put together by the state, agency, and other professionals and used to sort of establish a gauge of what libraries should offer, could offer, what we think residents in this state deserve from a library. And they have measures that are qualitative and measures that are quantitative. And basically, it's a minimum service, mid-level service, and a high service. Those quantitative measures, um, the biggest one probably is your staffing, the FTEs. And for our population that we serve, our service size, to be a minimum service library, we should have eighteen full-time equivalents. Um, we had twelve at this time.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So if we had eighteen FTEs, what would that mean for the library service? Would that mean more hours? Would that mean more people working at one time? How would that be distributed?
That, that's a combination of things. We, at one time, were opening at nine AM, so we would certainly go back to an earlier open and then have more Saturday hours. And for a while, we were open from noon to four on Sundays. And that's something that the community liked and appreciated. And of course, we haven't been doing that for two and a half years now. So it would add those hours in, but it would also increase, say, the number of classes and programming that we do and a lot of that community outreach.
Okay. So how many FTEs did you have when you had the longer hours and the Sunday hours, do you know?
We were at, um, about twelve point five.
Okay, so you still weren't at anywhere near the eighteen?
Oh, no, no. Um, and since the phone call we had, and I told you, we've had some stabilization and turnover, I had two resignations in the hour that followed. So, um, you know, it's just the way it goes. Then the other two significant quantitative measures are the size of your collection and how much money you spend on it. And as you can see, our collection is less than half of what it would be or should be if we were a minimum service library. And the same applies to the actual funding. We would be at a minimum of a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars spent on the collection. And I can just tell you that right now, if you had the money to do that, we couldn't because of square footage and also the weight restrictions that we have in our building. So that is not a feasible goal for us. Um, and so it really depends on how you would measure out your FTEs. How many full-time would you have with benefits? How many library assistants would you have relative to full librarians? So that budget could be all over the board, but roughly, we'd probably be looking at one point eight million. And this is something I just wanted to show you because I asked our consortium a couple of years ago if they could change our receipts that you get when you check out. So it would let you know if you had purchased these items, instead of checking them out from your library, how much you would have spent. So what is your library saving you? And the dollars for that year, um, our patrons from the city of Hudson saved two million dollars by using the library. That doesn't include any of the classes or programs that they attended. In two thousand and nineteen, we had twenty thousand three hundred people come to classes, programs, community events that we had. So that is a really exciting, um, number. It was a record for us. And now we're coming out of pandemic and the storm repairs. Attendance is starting to come up again, which has been really fun, especially this summer, getting the kids back in the building. And we're looking forward to seeing that grow in the future. And so we might all have very different ideas of what the appropriate funding amount is. I hope that we all at least agree on these three principles. That it should be sufficient, that our funding needs to be stable, and it needs to be sustainable as we move forward. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you have. I wish I had more answers on what the impact of the withdrawals mean. Um, I just don't think we know yet.
Thanks, Shelley. Questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Um, I find it, um, the numbers get confusing when we compare the Hudson library, whether it means joint or it's going to be a it means joint or it's going to be a municipal library now, to like the library in Roberts. Because running a library requires a minimum number of people. They might have four full-time equivalents there for maybe a circulation of 10% of what Hudson does or 25%. I don't know what their numbers are. But it clearly costs more to run a library like that because it's a smaller town. It's a very nice building. I don't know if you've ever been by there, but that's why it looks like, wow, Roberts is so generous with their library. They're spending so much money. But it's partly because the whole county, and that's mandated by the state, has required us, required that we support libraries, you know, that they, even small towns, Deer Park, you could see the cost per circulation quite high there, partly because we value and feel that the people in Deer Park have the right to access a library, a free public library. And I support that, I absolutely do. So I think that's one thing that's difficult, and I think we're going to step away from that as the city of Hudson as we go forward, because we do now have a municipal library, like it or not.
We're getting there.
Yeah, not yet.
We're getting there.
Very soon.
Okay, well, a year and a half.
Yes.
But my point being that I think that clouds the issue a little bit, implying that, oh, boy, we're so inadequate here, but it's partly because it costs so much to keep a library in one of those very small rural communities, smaller town, and they're staffed, nice building, lit, warm in the winter, but not as many people are using it and circulating it. So it makes the cost per circulation. Am I right on that, Shelley?
Not necessarily the cost per circulation, but their overall operating budget, for sure. And Deer Park is open, I think, two and a half days a week, you know, so that's, and that's what they can provide for service. That's what they can do. Probably, New Richmond is a good comparison, and River Falls, they serve 15,000 people, so you could look at them as well. Their 2019 budget was, I think, 1.2, 1.3 million. But they have a tremendous amount of state aid in River Falls. It's very different than our community. But we also serve double the population. So all of those numbers are, it's kind of like you can look at this in a lot of different ways, which is why I've got the three different things out there. But I appreciate that comment, and that's very much something we need to take into consideration as we go forward.
Right. I think looking at what are we doing and what do we need to do? And I don't know how we'll meet the funding that's necessary, but I would definitely throw out the idea that this might be a perfect item to bring to our residents for a levy override referendum. So that's neither here nor there today, but it's the sort of thing that if people care about the library and would get involved, then that vote would allow us to spend more money.
Yes, that is.
Over our levy if the residents dictate that to us by referendum, so.
Yes, that is one of the options that's in state law.
Something to think about. Anyway, thanks for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
I had a clarification.
Yes.
So I think I saw it on social media, residents of North Hudson, residents of Towne of Hudson, they're still welcome at this library. Is that correct?
Yes. And we have really tried to get the word out, talked at the meetings that were held, that we're still their library, and if they come through our doors, they're our patrons, and we're there to take care of them.
I think, especially relative to your question right now, Bill, I think it's important to understand that they have, the other three partners have requested that we allow them to withdraw from the joint library. They give us a year's notice. I think all three of them have requested that we let them out early, but we, and that's something that we decide if we allow them to terminate early. But we, it's not within our jurisdiction to say you can't, you know, they give us a year's notice, and they're out. But this isn't, this isn't over yet. And I mean, clearly, we're not going to try to talk unwilling partners into staying with a joint library. But the solution that they have presented us, we don't know if there's any type of precedent for that solution, which is to transfer levy capacity from one community to another for, and for purposes of transfer of services. We clearly had three opinions, one from the Department of Revenue. In fact, the solution that we presented was the Department of Revenue's solution. They suggested this is what you should do, along with an opinion that it would be allowable under law. Same opinion came from the Department of Information Services, as well as the drafter of statutes that actually drafted the law. All those opinions said that we could do that, that we could go down that road. They're concerned about lawsuits. We hear that frequently come up. And you can't stop somebody from suing somebody for anything, really. So is that a real threat, perhaps? But we've got three opinions that would likely, well, four opinions, counting our city attorney, that likely would defeat any type of lawsuit that might come their way, our way. We've got nothing from them at all about the transfer of levy capacity. We don't have a letter from the Department of Revenue saying that would be allowable. We don't have any letter or any examples of precedent that have been set where this is possible, but they're all hanging their hat on that. We're waiting to hear if this is feasible, if it's allowable. And then you might have battling opinions, you know, who knows? But so unless or until we get satisfactory proof that this is, in fact, allowable, I mean, this is where we're at right now. We're going to be here until, until it's proven to us that that levy capacity is transferable. Does that make sense? I do want to say this. I think I've been on this library board, I think, since 2012. I don't know. Mayor Virchell asked me to sit on this years ago. This is one very dedicated group of people. First of all, starting with our library directors, with their staff. I mean, you see that our staff hasn't been paid what the standard is paid throughout the library universe. And yet, our employees are hanging in there. They're very good at what they're do, very good at what they do. They're very passionate in what they do. They are a great face to our community. And our directors in particular have done a fantastic job of weaving their way into the fabric of our community. And this is, this is above and beyond just a job for them. I mean, this is their passion. And the people, the same with the board of directors and our foundation, that are trying to pick up the slack in providing monies to the library that originally their mission was just for capital improvements, and now they're into programming and funding operations. So this is, these people are very dedicated. We've been trying to find a solution to a problem for a long time. Our legislators have gotten involved, hence the three-year average that we're with, for our funding levels right now. And our legislators have gotten involved recently with the Department of Revenue and the drafter of statutes and the Department of Information Services. There's a lot of people that are trying to make this work right now. But kudos to our staff at the library in particular, our library director, directors, Shelley's predecessors, and the staff that she oversees. They, they want to make this work, and they, and they're hanging in there, and, you know, this is going to be a topic of conversation with us again for some time, at least in the near future. Hopefully, we can get some resolution to this soon. So thank you, Shelley. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your kind words.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so how do we get the right funding for this library, especially now with everything There's also a delay with the county as far as reimbursing for rural circulation, which we'll be more dependent on. So in answer to Bill, we absolutely need everybody who's been supporting the library to continue supporting the library in order to keep our rural circulation up so that we have the reimbursement from the county on that. And then because we have such a low cost of circulation, that also, so, so for, so what's our cost of circulation?
Well, it's gone up because of the storm and the pandemic. It was 3.60, $3.60 per circ, and now we're at 6.09 per circ because of the pandemic. And other libraries moved ahead a lot faster than we did because we got the storm right after.
So.
Man, just along this, Joyce, what is the average in the county?
That's what I was going to ask.
Oh, boy, I would have to go look at the numbers. I'm sorry, I don't have that with me. I know River Falls was over 10 per circ. They were closed a lot longer during the pandemic. It's a very tricky and unusual formula because it makes, it's not intuitive. To get the most money, you should have the highest possible budget, serve the fewest local people, and serve the greatest number of people who don't live in your service boundaries at the highest possible dollar. That's how you get the most county reimbursement. And I know they developed that formula because it's easy. It's, it works for all libraries. It's two numbers. It's a simple division, and you don't need to create a bureaucracy to administer and oversee it. That's why they did it. But yeah, it's counterintuitive, for sure.
So having, if the library were to close for Mondays and another day, then that would reduce our cost per circulation, or it would reduce the number of, the number of items circulating.
Likely, yes. Yeah, it becomes a spiral that gets out of control. And, you know, the mayor has pointed out a number of times throughout the years that we get sort of punished for being highly efficient. Again, very counterintuitive.
No rewards for trying to save taxpayers' money.
Internal rewards.
Yeah.
And as to your question about how do we make that determination, at one point, our board had conversation about a stakeholder retreat of sorts, because maybe the process needs to be, to the community, what do you want your library to do? First of all, do they know everything that it does? Then what should it be? What is the library that Hudson wants and deserves? And then work backward from that to try to get a dollar amount. So that is one approach we talked about, and we could not have that retreat. It was canceled and planned multiple times during the pandemic. And now we're just sort of in a holding pattern with, although the county funding mechanism was moving along and looked very promising, and now we're just not sure.
So do you think the board will be behind a retreat at some point?
Potentially. I think they are just on pins and needles, waiting to hear how the dissolution is going to work, and if the transfer is possible, and how does it work? What, what actual dollars will it mean? So, and I know the city wants the same answers, so.
Yeah. You know, one other group that I failed to mention in, in what I was saying is the friends of the library.
They're tremendous.
Who have stood by the library for, from day one, right? I mean, since we were a municipal library. And, and, I mean, they've raised a lot of money, and that too has been donated to the library to offset costs for programming and, and operations, I believe.
Yes, and they, they also provide a number of volunteers for us.
Right.
And I can think of one member who, every day, pre-pandemic, every day, every single day, like a shift, is in their, in the bookstore that they have for us, taking in books and pricing them and sorting them. I mean, that's the kind of commitment that they have shown us through the years, and we are so fortunate to have them.
This really is a labor of love for a lot of people, and there's a lot of people that are trying to make this all work, and we're thankful for that. Now we just have to try to figure out a permanent, sustainable funding solution.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks.
All right. Discussion and possible action on a fourth amendment to the Bella Rose Development Agreement, Register of Deeds Document Number 1095406 between the City of Hudson and Atwood Holdings, LLC.
Good evening, City Council. I'm going to take this one tonight. So much less conversation probably with this one. So with the Bella Rose Development, there are two changes that need to be made to the developers' agreement. One is in regards to the traffic signal at the intersection of Carmichael Road and Sophia Lane. That was a requirement to be installed there before QuickTrip is opened. Because of supply chain issues and other things going on, the permanent signal system, the components of it, like the steel poles and whatnot, weren't able to be obtained before the QuickTrip was, is slated to open in September. And so to allow QuickTrip to open, staff has agreed to allow them to put up a temporary traffic signal system to allow them to open while we're waiting for the materials to come in. And we want to make sure that, you know, that temporary system is not there forever. So that's kind of why part one of this agreement is there. Part two of the agreement was that sum of over $30,000 to cover steel coating, the internal roadways of the development. We allowed the developer to, instead of paving asphalt wedge for, while we're waiting for, you know, enough houses to be built or development to occur there, which is kind of the usual standard practice before you pave the final layer of pavement, we allowed them to pave that final layer so long as they would give us money to seal coat the roads so that any, you know, marks or blemishes or whatnot are essentially taken care of because of that extra traffic on the final lift of pavement. So those are the two things that this amendment would take care of.
So is QuickTrip paying the cost of the temporary signal, or who is covering that?
The developer overall is paying.
The developer's got to cover it.
I don't know what their agreement is with QuickTrip, but the developer's on the hook for the.
Is it going to mimic kind of what the, the permanent version's going to be? I mean, arrows or?
Yeah, yeah, it will be the same headway as the permanent signal system, yeah.
Move to approve the fourth amendment. Second.
Got motion, second to approve discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Sections 19.85 Sub 1, Sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85 Sub 1, Sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Number one, Hudson Area Joint Library Agreement, and B, closed session to consider a matter exempt from open meeting requirements pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85 Sub 1, Sub G, respectively, to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy for closing out emergency medical services fund balances.
Move to go into closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Where is that?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion's approved. We're going to a closed session in my office. Randy, could you open the door? All right, we are back in open session.
Wait for Randy. So in closed session, the council had a conversation about the EMS emergency medical services fund balances, and the outcome of that discussion now coming into open session is that in the best interest of the taxpayers of the city of Hudson, the city council would like to transfer the remaining EMS funds to the city's general fund.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. I don't have anything, I don't think, off the top of my head for future, anybody?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. We stand adjourned.